I would say everyone have a seat, but we don't have enough seats.
Standing room.
Standing room only. All right, so I'd like to call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting. Today is March the 5th, 2024, and the time is 9:32 a.m. And for the invocation, I would like to call on Pastor Bruce Schreiber from New Day Christian Church for the invocation, and welcome, President.
Lord God, we thank you for this day. Thank you for the gift that we have to wake up and to serve you today. We ask a blessing upon the board. May you give them wisdom, may you give them understanding, listening, discussion, decisions, and all of that may it honor you, and may it bless the people of Lee County. We love you, God. Thank you, and bless this meeting in Jesus's name. Amen.
Join us in our pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated if you can find a seat.
I've got one up here, Ken.
All right, so we have three ceremonial presentations this morning. I would like to recognize Commissioner Pendergrass for the first presentation.
Good morning. Thank you Chairman Falcone-Pablo, and we have a special guest now, Twix is here with us this morning, and with all the people here this morning, maybe somebody's looking for a companion, and Pablo would you like to let us tell us about Twix and what's going on Animal Services this month? We have a great service here in Lee County with domestic animal services, and Pablo is the director of that, and we have our guests this morning.
We have Twix here today. She is a Pomeranian mix, about two years old. She's friendly, good with kids, other dogs, so house-trained, so she's ready to go, so just come see us. So, yeah, she's.
Baby programs is going this month for the month of March.
Oh, yes, we have St. Patrick's Day. Where you can come adopt your own four-leaf clover, Little Charm, Lucky Charm, and dogs are $20, cats and kittens are $30, all good. We have our vaccine clinics this Thursday, so we've partnered with the libraries and Parks and Rec Department for locations. Last month, we were at Bonita Springs Library, and tomorrow, we're at Veterans Park in Lehigh, and next month, we will be at Kelly Road Complex.
So, $20 to adopt a dog, that's less than a parking ticket in the city of Fort Myers.
That's a good deal.
So, thank you again, Pablo, for you and your service and your organization, your department.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Pendergrass. Commissioner Rain, would you like to present the next ceremony?
Thank you, sir, I would. It's Irish American Heritage Month. Is anyone here from that organization? Come on up. I'm just standing at the podium, I gladly read the resolution, and then you can say a few words. Resolution reads, whereas by 1776, nearly 300,000 Irish nationals led and immigrated to American colonies and played a crucial role in American war for independence, and whereas Irish American helped to fashion a system of government for a young nation with five signers of Declaration of Independence, of Irish descent, three signers being Irish-born, 22 presidents having proudly proclaimed their Irish heritage, and whereas in 1792, Irish-born James Holland provided architectural plans for the White House and served as one of the supervising architects for the construction and the Capitol, and whereas Irish-born Commandant John Barry, who fought the last sea battle of the American Revolution off the coast of Florida, was recognized by the United States Congress in September 2002 as the first flag officer of the United States Navy, and whereas the Irish first came to Spanish La Florida in 1500s, first as missionaries and then mercenary soldiers, and then planners, traders, businessmen, doctors, and administration, and whereas three of the Spanish governors of La Florida were actually Irish military officers, and whereas Richard Arthur, an American priest from Limerick, who was appointed parish priest for St. Augustine in 1597, and judge of La Florida, established the first public school in America and opened it for both boys and girls, and of all races, and whereas Andrew Jackson, whose family came from the county orchard, served as Florida's military governor following the acquisition of the United States, and whereas Irish Americans, since America's inception, have provided and continue to provide leadership and service to this nation, political, business, religious, and establishments, and whereas it's fitting and appropriate to share the Irish cultural heritage and the many valuable contributions of Irish Americans. Now therefore, it's resolved by the Board of County Commissioners, proclaiming March 2024 as Irish American Heritage Month, signed by our Chairman, Mike Greenwell.
Do you want to take a photo? I want to take a photo, and then you can say a few words.
Sure.
Come right here, come right here in front, get a photo.
Wonderful.
In this Pace Group, yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ready, one, two, and three, and one more.
Thank you. If you say a few words for us, that'd be great.
County Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, good morning. I'm Steve McPhillips, President of the nave Patrick Division One, Lee County, Florida, Ancient Order of Hibernians and Fort Myers. Our division was newly chartered here in Lee County in July of last year. On behalf of Irish American community in Florida, I'd like to express my gratitude for your kind consideration in designating March as Irish American Heritage Month. St. Patrick's Day, March 17th, is without question the biggest celebration of a national day across the globe. People will be celebrating this occasion and proclaiming themselves Irish for the day. During the month of March, Irish Floridians proudly reflect on the legacy of their Irish forebears who have contributed significantly to all areas of our society, contributions that have been made not only by the Irish, but so many ethnic and racial groups who came to the United States from the four corners of this globe, building this great country of ours. As a member of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, the oldest and largest Irish organization in the United States, tracing its roots to 1836, I'd like to acknowledge the extreme honor County Commissioners have bestowed upon all Irish Americans living within this community and the great state of Florida. Gorabat, myth, agus, la filer, Patrick, faill, shounas, do it. I know I butchered it, but in English, it's "thank you and have a blessed St. Patrick's Day." Thank you, great.
Thank you, sir. Okay, at our, reading our last ceremonial, Commissioner Sandelli.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am particularly honored to do this. I have two daughters who I continue to learn from, and hopefully have been able to impart to them a little bit of perspective in life. If there's anybody here from the Pace Group that would like to come forward, and I'll go ahead and read the resolution.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We'll go through this thing, I'll read the resolution, we'll take a photo, and then you have an opportunity to speak. Okay, Board of County Commissioners, resolution, whereas each month, excuse me, whereas each year, the month of March, is identified as Women's History Month, is a time when our nation reflects on the valuable contributions women make in our society, and whereas Pace Center for Girls believes that all young women are tomorrow's leaders, full of a man's potential, talent, and promise, and whereas Pace Center for Girls is instrumental in helping provide a better future through education, counseling, training, and advocacy, and the vision of a world where all girls and young women have power and a just and equitable society, and whereas Pace Center for Girls recognizes the unique needs of young women and collaborates with the Florida's Department of Children and Families, Department of Education, and the Department of Juvenile Justice to learn and be supported by communities that believe in their value, and whereas the Pace Center for Girls reports a 100% success rate in keeping girls out of juvenile justice system, and whereas February 5th, 2025, marks the 17th anniversary of Pace Girls Center for Girls providing services to Lee County. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Lee County, Florida, proclaims that March 2024 shall be known as Believing in Girls Month, and Lee County encourages all residents to honor the female spirit and promote the potential within all girls and women, duly executed this fifth day of March 2024 by the Board of County Commissioners and our Chairman, Mike Greenwell.
Thank you. Come on up, Commissioner Sandelli. Thank you.
Okay, and one, two, and three, and one more.
Thank you all.
Someone else say.
Thank you.
Hi. It's on? It's on?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners, and my name is Noel Casa Grande. I am the Board Chair of the Pace Board of Directors, and just appreciate everybody wearing red today because our colors are.
That color flies.
And I want to also say thank you to the community for supporting Pace for 17 years. We believe in girls every single month, but in honor of Women's History Month, making March extra special, and as Commissioner Sandelli said, and he has two daughters, which I went to school with, Go Gators.
And one of which is a sorority sister of her.
But I just want to say thank you to the community for supporting because we do have 100% success rate in keeping girls out of the criminal justice system, and Pace's focus on education and counseling and advocacy, so we continue to share its mission, and we invite you to come visit the center anytime and learn more about our mission and how you can believe in girls. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Okay, that concludes the presentations for this morning. At this time, we will take up the recap. There are no items to defer and no items for revisions, so moving on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Sandelli, do you have any items to pull?
I do none.
Commissioner Rain, any items?
I do not.
Commissioner Hammond?
I have none.
I have none. Commissioner Pendergrass?
Item number 20, and I move the balance.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Rain. At this time, we'll move to a public comment. I do have some cards, so, I'm sorry. You need to continue.
Can we pick up 20 now, or?
Yes, no, go ahead.
So, item 20, I just want to recognize our staff and everything. This is a great item, this is funding for the chambers, and I'd like to say thank you to staff and all the chambers coming forward for this. Obviously, we're just in long-term recovery. Commissioner Wayne and his task force have been working, this will be a long-term recovery. This is another tool that we can use to help the businesses and the islands recover and to help those chambers. So again, thank you for staff working on this to get this brought forward today for us, to help fund those chambers. So again, thank you for being here for that, and the members of the chambers that are here. Thank you.
Now we're ready for public comment. All right, so first person up will be Callie Johnson.
Callie Johnson, for the record, I'm the Board Chair of your Sambal Captiva Chamber. I want to thank you all for your unprecedented support of the revitalization of our islands. With your assistance, we'll shorten our time to full recovery. By continuing visitor center operations, you're helping us help ourselves. Our visitor center is the place to ensure our guests have correct information and realistic expectations for their visit. We appreciate your partnership in rebuilding our island economies by supporting the proposal for this funding. Thank you.
Next up will be Ron Clayton.
Hi, my name is Ron Clayton, I'm with the Chambers of Commerce. Good morning, Commissioners. I have the honor of being the Chair of the Fort Myers Beach Chamber, as well as the Sanibel Captiva Chamber, and I also serve on their board. I know most of the restaurants, hotel, restaurant and hotel owners on Sanibel, Captiva, and Fort Myers Beach by name, and I can tell you firsthand that several of them are back, and they are highly reliant on the services of our Chambers of Commerce and visitor center. At the Sanibel and Captiva Visitor Center, we have finally hit the monthly average of over 150 visitors per day, and are also consistently seeing over 7,000 vehicles cross our bridges daily. While these loyal visitors are coming to our islands, many are coming with little to no knowledge of what is currently open, and they are highly dependent on our chambers to assist them in planning their trips by pointing them in the direction of open shops, restaurants, attractions, and yes, in many cases, hotels. Your consideration for funding the visitor centers this morning will not only allow our chambers to work with the county's VCB to attract visitors to our destinations, but more importantly, enhance their visits significantly upon their arrival. On behalf of our communities on these barrier islands, I thank you for your diligence in this effort and encourage you to vote in favor of this funding. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is John Ly.
Thank you very much, Chair Greenwell and Commissioners. I just want to say thank you for everything that you've done for our communities before, during, and especially after Hurricane Ian. I'd like to thank each and every one of you, as well as all of county staff, for the in-depth discussion, diligence, and commitment to this initiative over the past year, but especially over the past six weeks. As you all know, Hurricane Ian impacted our barrier islands arguably as much as any natural disaster has impacted any community in the history of our state. While the natural beauty has rebounded quicker than most of us expected, our tourism-driven economy needs to be continuously spurred forward. Our local Chambers of Commerce in these barrier island communities and our counterparts within the Southwest Florida Chamber Alliance are committed to expediting the economic recovery timeline by doing all that we can to attract new visitors and service existing visitors to ensure that their visit is the best that it can be. No one knows our communities and therefore better, are therefore better equipped to be ambassadors to our visitors than our local Chambers of Commerce on Sanibel, Captiva, Fort Myers Beach, and Pine Island. This funding request is fulfilled, will be the catalyst that moves our destination marketing efforts forward, and allow us to provide full visitor center services to our business community. Once again, thank you to each and every single one of you for your commitment to our physical and economic recovery, and to each member of county staff for your hard work on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next up will be Jackie Lizak.
Jackie Lizak, President, CEO, Fort Myers Beach Chamber of Commerce. Sometimes the words "thank you" aren't enough. We are so appreciative, myself and my board members who were able to make it here this morning. Thank you to all of them, some of them from Marco Island even, oh my goodness. And we can't tell you how much this funding really means to us. The Fort Myers Beach community took it on the chin. I think we were pretty much unarguably the hardest hit. The chamber lost everything we had right to the last paperclip in the building, and nothing recoverable. I think I grabbed a couple of pictures and the hard drive on the way out the door. This funding is lifesaving for us. This funding will allow us to continue our kind of makeshift, mobile Roxy visitor information center that we've pulled together with the help of the community. It's located on Times Square with a donated trailer, volunteer hours, and a very, very small amount of staff time. This will allow us to expand that visitor information service seven days a week with good hours, so we can touch the folks who are coming back to support not only us, but the entire region, all of the islands, all of Southwest Florida, and it will also allow us to be able to direct those visitors, let them know what's available, not only on Fort Myers Beach, but on Sanibel, Captiva, Pine Island, and inland. It's so critical to us, and it's so important that we have a presence out there for the entire community, and being able to expand that and being able to point those guests in a direction, greet them, thank them for coming to support us, and then support the businesses who help to take care of them, support the residents on the island, who it's critical we get them back into their homes. All of this ties together, so thank you to all of you for that funding. Thank you to the VCB, to the county staff, to the five of you. Thank you to our town who supports us, to the residents who live there, and of course, to all the businesses, and thank you to my board. I could not do every day what I do if it weren't for their support. Our gratitude is immeasurable. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
I move the item second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, we have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any objections? Seeing no objections, item 20 moves five to zero.
Or do you move the balance?
We have a, we have any public comment on the rest of the balance of the consent agenda? Any other public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment on the rest of the agenda. We have a motion to approve the rest of the agenda from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Rain. Any objections? Seeing none, sent it in to passes five to zero. All right, moving on to the administrative agenda. Commissioner, I mean, Mr. County Manager, please introduce item number one of the administrative agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is to create a CDBGDR Affordable Housing Application Evaluation Committees, and I'd like to ask Chinny Sutton to present this item.
Item one establishes two evaluation committees for the review of applications submitted in response to the CDBGDR Affordable Housing Development and Preservation NOFA's, so that includes rehabilitation as well as new construction of affordable housing. Each committee will have five voting members who are subject matter experts in housing development, resilient building, finance, and also in underwriting. The Committee for New Development will also have one non-voting member appointed by each municipality and one appointed by the county manager. The committees will review the applications submitted in response to the NOFA's and will make recommendations to the board for funding. So as a reminder, the schedule for the NOFA packets is on the screen, so we anticipate that the first one coming to the board for housing will be in May, and those applications were just submitted on Friday, so currently undergoing technical review and evaluation. And that is it for item one.
Commissioners, do we have any questions for staff at this time?
I had one, Mr. Chairman, if I may. You know, one question, just looking at the makeup of the board on the, I realize it's seven non-voting members, one nominated by each local government entity, you know, I was, my question was, is this proportional to the way the population of the county really works? We've got each city with a representative, and we know that about half of our county's population lives within those cities, but fully half of the population lives in unincorporated Lee County, but there's only going to be one member representing Lee County. Do you think that we should perhaps entertain the idea of adding more representation for the unincorporated parts of Lee County? Perhaps the staff could reach out to people from different geographic areas within Lee County. You know, North Fort Myers is not within any of these cities, would love to make sure that they're not forgotten. Same with Dunbar is part of my, my commission district. It might be interesting to see if they could reach out to some of those areas. That's just my thought, Mr. Chairman, before.
Okay, you vote on the other. All right, do we have any other comments? Questions for staff?
I'll follow up on Commissioner Hammond. I agree with your comments, and moreover, you know, you look at islands like Pine Island, who obviously has amazing devastation, and just seems to be a makeup that could be more extensive. That would be what I would certainly think, but those are my comments. I agree with Commissioner Hammond.
Commissioner Hunter, would you like to discuss that?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think we just need guidance is whether the board, if the board decides to move forward with this, if you would like to select a person, or would you like us to do what we did previously and present additional people for that, for the, for the committee?
So we would actually have, we would be able to vote on it, but then still come back to it, to add additional people?
Yes, you could vote on it with the direction of whether you're going to add additional people to the committee, or you prefer us to provide a list of additional.
Okay, any other comments at this point?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, to answer County Manager Hunter's question, I mean, I'm okay with the will of the board on that. I realize that our staff actually furnished all of these people who they're recommending to be appointed today. Either we could do it through our normal appointment process by picking people from our different districts, or we could, or we could obviously allow the staff to bring forward recommendations, whatever the will of the board is. I just feel like, you know, as big as the unincorporated part of the county is, it's a lot of work to ask one person to carry the weight for the whole county, especially knowing as diverse as we are geographically.
Yeah, Commissioner, you make a great point. There's no question that North Fort Myers and Dunbar and those areas should be represented, no question about that, so.
Just, if I could just say, well, just so everybody knows, Dunbar is in the city of Fort Myers, so they will have a seat, but it's up to, you know, the city that could point somebody from Dunbar or from somewhere else to understand what your concerns are, because I have the same concerns throughout the county, is make sure we have representation, but the Dunbar can't be represented based upon the city geographic. Dunbar is completely inside the city of Fort Myers, so they have a seat there, though.
Good comments. Yes, sir, Commissioner Rain.
So, the other odd thing, and again, it was really the will of staff and you all, but it's as large of a group and a large of an undertaking we're going to have, and there's no liaison from the five of us at all, which I find to be different. Considering the scope and the magnitude of the situation, I just would have thought that it should be a liaison, you know, where we obviously oversee this, so, you know, again, that's just my two cents. When I look at just what's in front of us and the opportunities we have, we'll be very, very removed, there'll be no really opportunity, and, you know, in all other undertakings, we seem to have a liaison that kind of is there to represent, you know, whether it's CDC or MPO, how do we not look at a situation where we're allocating $1.1 billion and have nobody from the county commission as a liaison? Just find that to be bizarre.
Major, Hunter, would you like to?
But that's been the will of what I was told. I was told that's, you know, just the way the structure's been done, and that's what we have all decided. I don't remember having a conversation about that.
If I may go ahead and speak on that before you go, I do remember actually talking about that, and it was because of, I think, some of us had reached out to try to be liaisons in certain situations and absolutely get just pounded on for just trying to do the right thing, and I think some of us were taken back by that, and, and we kind of agreed that it's, it's very tough to have one individual commissioner to go out to try to do something because you end up taking 100% of the blame. So that was, I think, the discussion we had. Mr. Hunter, please speak to that.
I just wanted to make a recommendation. I think it would be easier if each commissioner appointed someone to the committee. That would make it, I think it would be a more smoother transition for that process.
So then, may I try a motion to see if it pleases the board, and I'm open to amending it if there are other suggestions. So, motion to approve the staff recommendation as laid out, however, with the addition that each commissioner would make one district-sensitive appointment as well to the, to the committee.
I'll second that.
All right, so any other comments before we go to public comment?
The only comment I would have is if there are names that are in that have been submitted that we might also consider besides the ones that we already know, I think that would be helpful as a starting point, too.
Oh, yeah. So, okay, at this time, would anyone, I'll open up public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item number one?
Yes, please.
Marsha Ellis, please, come on up.
Thank you, Marsha Ellis, for the record. So I've looked over the paperwork, I wish you would have looked it over in more detail, but I just want to advocate for there to be public oversight and opportunity to give input, because I think it is important for it not to become, you know, further obfuscated, but, but something available in that the public can access, and I know the visualization piece comes into play with the next agenda item, but, you know, making sure that we're getting those, those GIS systems up and running, that the visualization's there, that there, that it's linked so that folks in their neighborhood can follow what's happening. can follow what's happening. Also appreciate the comments from Commissioner Ruane, because, you know, the impacts really are not proportionate when we talk about what occurred with Hurricane Ian. It really just hammered the coastal communities. And sometimes I think that having a point, a point person is helpful, because then you don't have the competition of trying to take whatever that you want to happen to multiple people, which can send the wrong message to the public if there's a lot of competition of, oh, well, this person may not, not be advocating for me, so I'm going to go to someone else. So I actually think that a point person is helpful. That way that it's not, it doesn't create competition, or even a perceived competition. It's clearer, it's cleaner, and I also think that Commissioner Ruane has been the person who has been very vested in this recovery process. He is the face that the community associates with recovery. He's been the spokesperson for the county and the commission on this topic, and in this particular instance, I think that continuing, having that continuity is important for public perception, and it's protective of, of our resources going forward. It maximizes what the, what the pub, how the public can interface. So that, those are my thoughts. I just want to make sure that we get the visualization up sooner rather than later, because I know we even have applications that are already due, so that the public can see what's going on, and we can make sure that we are being as equitable as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on in. Morning, Mr. Shot Hunter.
I agree with you, Mr. Hammond. You know, the different neighborhoods, Dunbar, Ties, North Fort Myers needs to have import because we need affordable housing in all those areas. And I see a lot of housing going up. Michigan has the Peter Claver and that, but the thing is, there's a waiting list. And where are, my thing has always been, where are people going to be, they can pay something until they can get into something. We want to get people off the streets, so it's finding options that's affordable, you know, just a place for them to stay, use a bathroom, even a, you know, camp, whatever, but they're contributing. And that money that they contribute goes into the fund to build these houses. I thank you for your time. I got to.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment?
After.
Yeah, Mr. Hunter, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that the five new appointees are specific to the new development campaign.
Okay. Okay, so we, at this time, I'll close public comment. We have a motion to approve Commissioner, from Commissioner Hammond. We have a second from Commissioner Pendergrass. Are there any further discussion?
Yeah.
We're going to take a brief recess, everyone, okay?
Commissioners, we have any questions or comments for staff at this time?
Move item.
Okay, we have a motion to move the item from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. I will open up for public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on item number two? Marcellus?
Yes, thank you. So when I looked into Horn, specifically, the first thing that popped up on their site, you know, from Louisiana, because they specialized in disaster recovery, is reimbursement. And that concerns me a bit because reimbursement means that you have money to begin with. And so what that leaves me with is real concern for folks that may not have had the money to put in on fixing their house or whatever. And now that they're not going to have the opportunity, because some of the rehabilitation ends in like May, to be served. And I think it's important that we have a good idea with the spending of these funds on what is being put out for reimbursement versus what had not occurred up to the point that a person was seeking help. Because I think that that is a bit of a gap. I know that it's been really difficult for people to get contractors, et cetera. So that was one thing I'm concerned about. Second of all, getting the public platform, like I just mentioned, I think is a real top priority so that folks have a way to interface and review the data, and we can get a better handle, you know, on what's happening there. I'm also watching closely policies related to first come, first served, that the pool of applicants is being reviewed in whole and that there's not necessarily given priority to who got in the door first, because I don't think that's reflective of need when we have those types of policies. You know, evaluating a pool of applicants objectively and not looking at who was first in the door really gives us a lot more accurate data to go off of. And that's pretty much it. I wish I had more time to review these documents, and I will. I think that they're doing a great job in terms of the professionalism, clarifying a lot of important information. It's a big invest in time for people to get caught up with what's happening and feel a little bit behind the eight ball, because we have some windows closing. And I just hope that, you know, all the lessons that we're learning as a community don't just benefit us now and our community in the future, but other communities that experience disasters like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Anyone else like to make comment on item number two? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. I had a motion for approval from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion?
I would like to thank all the Lee County staff. We've seen today what they've done the last year with all the door knocking, and all the informational meetings, getting out to the public. And so again, thanks to all the staff for what you did.
Okay, do we have any objections? Seeing no objections, item number two carries unanimously. Mr. Horner, please introduce item number three.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the launch CDBGDR, Critical Infrastructure and Public Facilities Program. I'd like to ask Mr. Glenn Salier to present.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is your third CDBGDR item today. We are asking authorization to publish two notices of funding availability, both infrastructure-related. So we would be offering up to $100 million for public facilities. Think of these as structures typically occupied by persons that serve the public. And almost $130 million for critical infrastructure. Think about lift stations, you know, sewer, water, utilities, roads, that kind of thing. The eligible applicants include the county and the six municipalities. Each of these jurisdictions can partner with other agencies if they have infrastructure needs, but it would actually be the county and the municipalities who are the applicants for these funds. Try to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions for staff at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call for public comment on item number three. Marcellus?
Thank you. Wow, there's a lot of great information in this particular item. So first of all, I'm going to, I really appreciate the clarity of the Conflict of Interest and Disclosure Form that has been developed. I just think that those are worthy, that, by the way, that's page 45 in the infrastructure, worthy of reviewing, because it makes it clear, very clear, what is considered conflict of interest, how to go about it, including that the request for an exception does not authorize the conflict of interest. So I think that that is worthy for everybody to review in great seriousness and detail, so that it goes a long way to clear up a lot of misconception and what could be perceived negatively among the public. So I am very appreciative of that. Second of all, on page 31, when we look at the criteria of meeting the national objectives for projects under slums and blight, the last bulleted point, which is known or suspected environmental contamination. So I think that this is kind of an underrepresented national objective that we could look at as a community when we're prioritizing. And then later, I'm going to go back and take a look at those checklists that have been developed for technical review to see how prominently that that figures into that criteria for evaluation. And then lastly, I'm going to point out on page 34, the Sustainability and Resilience Measures, number three, describe the value of the proposed project. And then the last portion of that includes how well the project will enhance resilience in the long-term and during extreme events. So the descriptions should include the qualitative and quantitative data. So I think that the practices of excluding, let's say, extreme event data from things like infrastructure, or stormwater planning, or other activities that have happened and become standard practice in the past, that the federal directive is clear that we must consider that extreme event data when we're evaluating these projects and that, again, is going to be something that I'm going to look for in the technical evaluation criteria that we are, in fact, embracing to the greatest extent, that data to inform decision-making. And we're not excluding it because it makes life easier for engineers or staff. So thank you for the opportunity to give comment on this.
Thank you. Any other public comment on item number three? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comment. Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve from Commissioner Sandelli. I will second, from Commissioner Greenwell. Any further discussion at this time? Seeing none, motion, item number three moves unanimously. Mr. Horner, please introduce item number four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to reprogram unused American Rescue Plan Act funding. And I'd like to ask Mr. Salier to present the item.
Commissioners, staff is recommending reprogramming some unspent American Rescue Plan Act funding. This is the first of a few of these items that you'll see throughout this calendar year where we will true-up programs that have underspent their original allocations. The reason you'll see them through the remainder of this year is we have to have these funds obligated no later than December of '24. We then have some more time to spend the funds, but they have to be finally obligated by the end of this calendar year. In this particular instance, we are recommending reallocations for the Salvation Army to provide emergency shelter beds and to public safety for emergency medical services. The team can speak to either of those if you like.
Okay, at this time, Commissioners, we have any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I will open up public comment on item number four. Would anyone like to speak on item number four? Okay, seeing none. I will close public comment. Does any?
Move item.
Commissioner, Mr. Pendergrass, make motion to approve item number four. We have a second from Commissioner Wayne. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Item number four moves forward unanimously. Mr. Horner, please introduce item number five.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is to approve FDOT funding agreement for Hickory Bridges PDNE. And I'd like to ask Mr. Price to present the item.
Good morning, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. Admin agenda item number five, would execute a local funding agreement with FDOT for funding of the project development and environmental study for the replacement of the Hickory Island Bridges in the amount of $6 million. Funding for this comes from a state legislative appropriation from last year's session. The PDNE study is the first step to replace the aging Big Hickory Pass, Little Carlos Pass, and New Pass Bridges on Hickory Boulevard. Replacement of these bridges is currently the 13th-ranked Tier One project in the board's transportation rankings. We expect to solicit a consultant to perform the study in the next couple of months, and we're here for any questions.
Okay. At this time, Commissioners, we have any questions or comments for staff?
I move the item. I'd like to say thank you to our staff working with that, and also our state leadership. And with the state, we've built a lot of bridges the last year and a half. So thank you with their continued work relationship. This shows we're all working together. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
A second from Commissioner Sandelli. Okay, at this time, I will open up a public comment on item number five. Does anyone wish to speak on item number five? Okay, seeing none, I will close public comments. We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass. We have a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Item number five moves forward unanimously. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Andrea Fraser from the County Attorney's Office. I have your first public hearing regarding the COPCN. I have the affidavit of publication. I have reviewed it and find it legally sufficient informant content to proceed with the public hearing at this time. At this time, staff will present their report.
Love to have you, Andrea.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Benjamin Abus, Public Safety. Before you, public hearing number one is to consider a COPCN application from TransStar Transport Service LLC, doing business as TransStar Ambulance Service. To give you a little bit of background on the application and the timeline, this application was received by the department in February of 2023. It was found sufficient by the County Attorney's Office and Risk Management in December. The staff report was issued on January 5, and it was scheduled for a hearing at your February 6 meeting. The applicant requested a deferral to this morning's board agenda, which is why it is before you today. In the spirit of brevity, I won't go through all of the requirements, but as a reminder, there are six requirements of Section 9, a Lee County Ordinance 08-16, all of which must be met in order for the certificate to be issued. In the staff report, there were two sections that were noted to be deficient. Item B speaks to the sufficient knowledge and experience to operate the service. In reviewing the application, the leadership of TransStar has healthcare leadership experience, but they have not supplied evidence of experience managing pre-hospital transport systems or ambulance services. That's typically something that the board looks for. And secondly, item C speaks to an adequate revenue base for the service. The application contains some generic statements. The applicant has furnished some additional information, but it is unclear if the actual LLC holds any assets to support the operation of the business. And with that, there are two reasons that the staff report identifies to recommend denying the application for the COPCN. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, at this time, Commissioners, any questions or comments from staff? Commissioner?
So based upon the statute, your staff were recommended denial because of the lack of evidence?
Yes, sir. The staff report recommendation is to deny the application.
I move the item with the recommended staff denial of the application.
We have a second. Okay, we have a motion to approve item number one, and a second from Commissioner Sandelli. At this time, we'll open up for a public comment. I do have some cards. Yep, so first will be Elena Lacy. Good morning. Please state your name when you cannot, please.
My name is Alana Lacy.
Alana Lacy, thank you.
And I'm a registered nurse in the state of Florida. I have 45 years in both the pre-hospital and emergency room setting. I spent 30 years on the ambulance, and I've been in the ER for 15 years. I do have supervisory experience in the pre-hospital arena, although I've never actually operated a service before. But I do know how they run. I know how ERs run, so I know both sides of the ambulance bay. And I can say 100% that I've had a lot of leaders, both good and bad. And I feel like I'm a very good leader based on the experiences I've had with other great leaders. And I want to thank you for entertaining our application. And we do have financial backing. We have two partners that are here with me and that are ready to go forth with this ambulance service to help serve the citizens of Lee County. And also, not only the citizens, but the hospitals. These patients lay in the ER for hours waiting on transport, and we could be that extra entity to come in to help move these people from point A to point B instead of them just lying in the ER for hours at a time. There are only two other services in the county that do this. We would be the third. We are a startup group. We're small. We have one ambulance. But we anticipate growing to at least another ambulance within six months. There's a lot of people here. There's a lot of people moving here every month, every year. The population grows and grows. The transit people that come to live in the winter, a lot of them are staying. And I run into people every day in the ER saying, well, we just moved here. We just moved here. And so our area is growing, and I think another service is sorely needed. And thank you for hearing me today.
And thank you for your comments. Next up will be Brett Coleman.
Hi there. Good afternoon or good morning. I'm Dr. Coleman. I'm an emergency physician, trained at Duke University and University of Arizona. I'm co-medical director of TransStar. And then I also work at several hospitals in Lee County, Port Charlotte County, and other counties around the state. So I am both co-medical director and also business partner with these young ladies. And we would like, in my experience working in these hospitals, I also have experienced significant delays at times for interfacility transport, especially with the number of new freestanding facilities, which has created a pretty exponential, plus the population growth, a fairly exponential demand of interfacility transport needs for non-emergent, basic life support, and advanced life support transport needs. In my experience, sometimes the only two operators that are available, and one of the other ones is also fairly small. At times, especially in the evenings, you can have pretty substantial delays. And when you have sick patients, that makes a big difference. So also, you know, it's important, you know, now to not take the county EMS service out of, you know, because of the interfacility non-emergent needs, not take them out of their primary service, which is responding to 911 emergencies. So I think that's why it's important to make sure that there's adequate private sector, interfacility, ambulance transfer companies to perform those tasks as needed. Me and my other colleague and business partner, Steve Outten, have, you know, more than sufficient investable assets. And we, you know, have our initial partnership agreement. And, you know, as we, as additional assets, you know, become needed during the startup period before it's, you know, before revenue is going to be received and that it's cash flow positive, you know, we have to anticipate, or we have to kind of take it step by step as far as, you know, adjusting our business agreement and advancing those, or putting in those assets and making adjustments. So currently, not all those assets are in the LLC itself. However, the ambulance is already fully paid for, but then leased through a second LLC, which we own and manage. And, you know, I think have more than enough resources to bring the service to the county. And I think we have more than enough experience to ensure that we're delivering on, you know, the highest quality standards of care for EMS transport and have experienced training.
Up next will be Danielle Ivory.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Danielle Ivory. I'm a member of TransStar Ambulance Service. We started TransStar because we all saw a need, a public need for additional non-emergency transport in Lee County. We would like to be of assistance to the current city, county, and fire EMS entities along with two of the other non-emergency companies in the county. Within my background, I add to the company. I'm not a doctor, of course. But let's see, I was the Santa Rosa County and Escambia County Non-Emergency Transport Coordinator. I was also the VA and Military Non-Emergency Representative for my area. I work with various transport entities where I arrange ground and air transport. I'm a proud citizen of Lee County, and I want to be of service to my county. I will say that, working with EMS, it was very rewarding for me. I stepped into that role first in a business capacity, and I worked with AMR. Are you familiar with them? And I was kind of like a test position for them. So they wanted to be of, instead of putting all the burden on their emergency systems to transport non-emergency, they decided that they just wanted to have a county position, so to speak, to work with non-emergency. So I know firsthand how to work with the case managers. I know how to work with the families. So it's not just about transporting from facility to facility. It's also about dealing with the families. And so when they talk about delays, I think about families. I think about that patient, where they need to go. And that is my biggest concern within the company, and that's my value to the company and to this community. Thank you.
Up next is Dr. Stephen Dutton. Outen, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. Again, my name is Dr. Stephen Outten, board-certified emergency physician, trained in Chicago, been practicing for 23 years. I do have the experience in EMS county systems. I was actually medical control for, med control for several ambulances in different states. Actually just completed another EMS med control course for the state of Alabama for a muscle license and do some work. I do live in Florida. I practice throughout the state. Have seen multiple times, just like my colleagues have iterated, the difficulty in serving the community and seeing that the patients have the need to be transferred somewhere else, and they're waiting in the ER for, you know, five, six, seven, eight hours, because you don't have ambulances available. And it's difficult when you have to pull an ALS truck out of service to do a non-emergency transfer. I mean, we want to serve the community in every aspect possible. And it makes it dangerous sometimes when ALS truck is not available to respond to ALS calls to do a non-emergency transfer. And it's just, you're sitting in the ER, and you want the patient to be served. And just the experience having to wait on the bed and be in the room for five, six hours is just, you don't have anything to say, you know? We just want to provide the service and serve the community the best way we can in all aspects possible. And that's why we're coming forward together as a group and as my colleagues to try to get this service started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else wish to speak on public hearing item number one? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion to deny from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? Okay.
Would just, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask, if there was anything that our public safety department heard in public testimony today that changes their recommendation or anything like that?
Yes, we could ask staff. Mr. Horner could give?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Ben's on his way.
Y'all could go ahead and take a seat, if you would. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for your comments.
Commissioner, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Just, Director, did you learn anything in the public testimony from the principles of this organization today that would change your recommendation at this time?
We received the additional information, most of which was provided in public testimony yesterday morning, and some of that was provided to your offices as well. At this time, without further investigation into the information that was provided, I would not change my recommendation.
Do companies have an opportunity to reapply down the road in order to try and satisfy anything that was found deficient in their initial application?
Yes, sir. They can immediately reapply and go through the application process, and we will take it through a sufficiency and staff review once again with additional information.
Okay, thanks. That answers my question.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have, make a comment about it as well. Obviously, having sometimes more can be better. And I do feel that having other options is something that we could obviously use for public safety. So that is my comment. So at this time, I have a motion to deny from Commissioner Pendergrass. We have any other discussion?
I'll just make one comment. I think the reality is, we all know, we are growing. We have a need. We're not looking necessarily to, you know, to deny, the sacred denial. Fact of the matter is, is that when it comes to public safety, when it comes to issues that probably none of us are that equipped, you have to go to our staff and their analysis. If the applicant has the ability to go back, answer those questions, and satisfy those, I would encourage them to do that.
Yes, thank you. And I as well. Any other comment? Okay, at this time, we have a motion to deny from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Do we have any objections? I object. Motion moves four to one. I would recommend you come back immediately and try again, and try to meet the criteria. At this time, the motion is denied four to one. County attorney, please introduce item number two.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Halverson, County Attorney's Office. I have your second public hearing this morning. This item has been duly advertised. I provided the affidavit of publication to the clerk. This public hearing is a request to adopt an ordinance repealing Lee County Ordinance 13-18 relating to the abandoned property registration program. Maintenance of the registry has become obsolete since it's not necessary for identifying property ownership. Properties registered with this program remain subject to ordinances and regulations pertaining to property maintenance and upkeep. If there are any questions, staff's available.
Okay, at this time, do we have any questions for staff? Okay, I will open up for public comment. Would anyone like to speak on item two? I do not see cards. Does anyone have a card? Okay, this time I will close public comment. Do we have a motion?
Move item.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Pendergrass, a second from Commissioner Sandelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, item number two is carried unanimously, five to zero. Mr. County Attorney, please introduce item number three. There is no item number three. Okay. I'm a little off today, and I'm going to go ahead and make this comment before we move forward. And then I'm going to take a five-minute recess before we start. I lost my sister last night. And I need to take five minutes. So can we come back in five minutes? Thank you. Thank you. (applause)
... Thank you. Mike, you're in our press. We're gonna move on to the next agenda item, which is obviously any walk-ons. I don't know of any walk-ons or any carryovers. Commissioner Items, Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one item real quick, just to say thank you so much. You know, County Commissioners, we, as a team, years ago created an incentive fund in Northport Myers to try and attract new development. We saw that while the rest of the county was taking off and growing, Northport Myers continued to see blighted properties throughout the area. And, you know, one of the things that I heard most commonly from the residents there is, I asked, what could we do to try and help Northport Myers? Was, what could you do some better landscaping, especially around the Hancock and 41 area? Well, today, on the consent agenda, item number eight, you all approved a grant to the folks who are revitalizing Hancock Square at Hancock and 41, and that will go towards enhanced landscaping. And so I just wanted a heartfelt thank you on behalf of the folks in Northport Myers who have been waiting a long time to see this area get improved and cleaned up. You know, the persistence paid off, so thank you very much. And I also want to thank our economic development team too, the entire county staff, but in particular, the economic development team who worked with, who worked with the applicant on this. That's just fantastic that we got this one to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Commissioner Pendergrass.
I just want to thank staff and the board, as we were all there Friday for the kickoff for the Southwest Florida Ag Expo, and I just want to say what a great event for our community. If you've not been there this year yet, you have eight days left of the Ag Expo at the Lee Civic Center. I'd like to thank staff from the County Manager's Office, the County Attorney's Office, all the staff, down to Parks and Rec and Fleet Maintenance, and everybody participated in this program. You guys did an amazing job. You totally overwhelmed me. I looked at concerns six months ago, if we could kick this off, but we got it off. And it shows how important this one org, this organization is. So I'd like to commend staff, everything, and they're having a great program. I was out there against Sunday, after doing my family, and it was just an unbelievable event for our community. So again, thank you to your staff, and thank you to the board for the support. And we were out there, I think it was Friday, and we saw how great the place looks, and just want to recognize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandelli. Listen, I'll echo your comments, Commissioner Pendergrass. I mean, it was a phenomenal opportunity, it was great to actually open it up and kick it off. It is really amazing, the transformation that's taken place, and it was a joy to go there on Sunday as well. So thank you all, really appreciate your hard work. I do have one item, gentlemen, that I'd like for consideration. We're in a recovery situation right now here in Lee County, and unfortunately, the Army Corps of Engineers has really decided to open up the thresholds. We're receiving anywhere from six to nine thousand CFS at the moment, depending on where you're measuring from. Obviously, we measure from Moore Haven, which is not necessarily where we would be measuring if Loosum was in place. And if Loosum was in place, we would be receiving the releases. It really calls for a 16.5 before releases would take place. My biggest concern is that we can't take another punch to the gut. I mean, there's just no way. I mean, an algae red tide event right now would be catastrophic to this recovery and the beach community and everyone in this community. So I'd like with your consent, and I can do this one of two ways. I'm very intent on writing a letter and talking about all the merits, working with staff. I've had some limited conversations, not only with Rowan, but with Dan DeLisi, about sending a letter to the Army Corps of Engineers and taking a really tough stance on where we are. I also think that the beauty of what took place from 18 through today was really imagine Lake in a really productive way. There was a paranoia with the El Nino that they really just held on the water far too long and really weren't doing any releases. So we go from, you know, very, you know, just enough, obviously, on the low flow end, and then we go to this other extreme, which, you know, currently, we all have approved Loosum. We wouldn't be receiving this type of release. So I'd like to write a letter on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, but, you know, that's your privilege. If that's something you could see that I could work with staff to do so, if not, I gladly am going to write a letter myself because I just am really concerned about the second punch that's gonna come.
You have my full support. Thanks for bringing it up.
Mine too.
I'd agree.
So if anyone would make a motion, since I'm unable to.
So I'll move.
An emotion, I have a second from Commissioner Sandelli.
Go ahead.
I don't have any.
I think with the little disruption, we have any committee appointments?
I have to take public comment on.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We got a little distorted here.
That's okay. So I have a motion, a second. Any public comment on that item since it's a vote?
I'm just briefly, Marcellus, Marcellus for the record. Let me just say that I think there's an opportunity for coalition. There are a lot of really concerned groups in the community that have strong voice that could join that letter and make it stronger.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comment. Any other public comments? I'll close public comment. Any other discussion?
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comment. Any other public comments? I'll close. Public comment. Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we'll go to committee appointments for commissioners. Commissioner Hammond.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two new appointments. I'd like to appoint Mary Phillips to the Mobile Manor O and M MSBU, and Nelson Taylor to the CDVGDR Evaluation Committee.
Second.
Motion, second. Any public comment? Any other discussion? Any objections? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Pendergrass.
I have none.
Is it my turn? Thank you. I have one new appointment. William Townsend, the Anchorage Way Norcolso O and M MSBU.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Any objections? Seeing none. Motion carries unanimously. I have one. I'm going to need a motion, a second, to the Galpe Island OMB. Peter Balakis is my new appointee.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close. Public comment. Any other discussion? Seeing none. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. County manager items.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On our last, at our last meeting on February 20th, the board asked us to defer for material recovery facility. So I'd like to ask Ms. Brady to present the item regarding the facility.
Good morning, Commissioners Christine Brady. Yes, at your last board meeting, a motion was made to defer the closing on this property. And we've prepared a few slides to address some of the expressed concerns from the board at the last meeting. So our first slide here, we just want to demonstrate what exactly this facility is and what it isn't. Want to make sure that you understand that this is an indoor covered facility, handling recyclables. The operation is not a landfill or a waste transfer station, and things like tire processing will not happen at this facility. Next slide, please.
Real quick, can we, can we hit on some of those, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I think these are really important because these are, these are things that I know we're going to hear comments about today because, and we heard them at the last meeting. Really good considerations that people bring up. They were concerned about hazardous waste. So what you're saying here is no hazardous waste at this site, and it would be prevented by the deed restriction even?
That is correct.
Okay, that's good to know. And then one question I had about this was, does it sound like everything's going to be inside? Will there be anything stored outside?
The machinery is planned to be in an enclosed facility, and at the end of this slide deck, the teams put together just a couple of examples of similar facilities that are in other communities, just to give you a sense of scale and scope.
What about any of the recycled material? Would any of that be stored outside?
No, sir.
No, not outside. Okay. All right. Thanks for answering that question.
Please proceed.
So on the next slide here, what we wanted to do was address some of the concerns, as it was also mentioned from the last time, about view and noise, sound hearing. So what I would like to point out is that this property is currently zoned as industrial. And one, some of the allowed uses that, that can, that could happen on this site include manufacturing, processing and warehousing, trucking terminals, vehicle and equipment dealers, and wholesale establishments. And that's just to name a few of them. That zoning only requires a 25-foot setback. What we are proposing through our design process is a 1,025-foot setback, which is roughly about three football fields. And within that setback, we are talking about creating two berms with natural plantings that will help provide appropriate buffering between the residential community and from, from our facility.
Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
I have a question. Christine, so, and I'm just full transparency here. So yes, I voted against this last year, but also I've mentioned these concerns over the last two years of this process. If we did not build, the county would build this facility. The current waste management, according to the current zoning, could build something there or use it, and they will sell the property. They will use it for industrial use. We know that. But they could build something with only 25-foot setback from the property line of Pelican Preserve in Stony Brook, correct?
That is correct, sir.
And ours is currently 1,025 feet.
That is what we're proposing through our design process.
And I knew that number already because over the last two years, all the public meetings we've held, all the tours, we, that was something I was concerned about. If this didn't get built, which we didn't want it in my backyard, their backyard, but we did, we would, we could get worse if it wasn't, if we didn't build the facility and have control of that, correct?
Based on what it's currently zoned at, there are a lot of other operations that probably would not have the same considerations that the county is, is contemplating now.
The traffic, we heard concerns with a few weeks ago on from Treon, actually was not affected. It's traffic that I deal with and available to us with on 82. Because the entrance would be off 82, correct? Not Treon.
That is correct.
In the city from ours is off of State Road 82, the Sixth Lane Divided Highway, correct?
That is the current design plan. And I would just like to note on that traffic slide right there, we're talking about an estimated 100 vehicles per day, of which predominantly they'll either be coming in the early morning or later in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a civil meeting. We obviously dealt with this two weeks ago. I believe you all were very pleased with the outcome. I just really want to make sure we respect people here. We have that common thing. If we can't do that, I'll just call for an adjournment. We'll break. I'm just going to have a professional conversation. I appreciate the fact that you have the opportunity to speak your mind. I really don't really want to have any disrespect to this, the way we conduct business, screaming out, scaring, whatever. None of that's called for. There may be people for this. There may be people against this. I do not want them intimidated. Everybody has the opportunity to speak. And quite frankly, I think we were very, very, very attentive last meeting. We listened to you loudly and clearly. We certainly made the decision we did. So I believe it's in everyone's best interest to respect the process and don't come to a conclusion, okay? The questions are germane. They're important because what was said at the last meeting, there's a lot of things that aren't necessarily accurate. We're just trying to make sure we get accurate information. We want to be aware of your concerns. So I will let everyone speak that has to speak. But please, have respect for this room. Have respect and professionalism among both sides. I'm going to do it for you. You're going to do it for me. That's all I ask. Thank you. Continue, ma'am.
Thank you. So just to wrap this slide up, what we had heard was we don't want to see it. We believe that that 1,025 gives us a lot of buffer and a lot of opportunity to create plantings that would allow us to basically tuck this facility in there. We don't want to smell it. Again, this is not landfill. We're not dealing with wet trash here. This is an enclosed facility, and we don't want to hear it. The machinery that will be used will also be enclosed in this facility. And with those additional buffers, we believe that we're doing everything that we can to help mitigate those issues for the surrounding communities. Next slide, please. So board, you had talked a little bit about what the communication timeline is, and I've highlighted some of the dates that we met with citizens out at various locations. Those meetings started first with briefing the board on the status of the search, and that was back in March of 2023. June 16th, there was a Gulf Coast tour with Pelican Preserve Board members. August 1st, the board is when the board approved the purchase and public comments then. October 27th, we were invited to a meeting with the Pelican Preserve Board. Doug Whitehead and Rebecca Rodriguez from Solid Waste attended this over two-hour meeting. A frequently asked questions document was prepared, and they spoke at great length on all of those FAQs. And we continue to update the FAQs as new information or questions come in. November 15th, we were invited to the public meeting at the Gateway Community Development District. And on January 15th, Doug Whitehead and his team hosted a tour out at Buckingham. Not the same facilities, but at least to get a better understanding of the type of operation that our solid waste team puts together. As far as the site selection, I do want to stress that our solid waste and county lands team have worked extensively for just about two years now, looking throughout the county for an appropriate site. And this included all along the Alaco Corridor. There were challenges with many of the properties that we looked at. One of them is there was a number of property owners who did not want to sell to us. We had other issues with, with property that was zoned for agriculture. We had properties that had protected species on it. We also had properties that just were not conducive for this type of use. And this property is compatible with the other properties that are surrounding it because the other properties are zoned industrial. And with the additional acreage that would allow us for that additional buffering, this is, this is why we got to make the recommendation to the board to proceed with this property here. Next slide, please. So here is the examples that I had talked to you just a little bit earlier. Again, these are not ours, but these are two facilities that are similar in size and scope and scale to give you an understanding of what that enclosed facility might look like. Next slide, please. And then this is a site diagram. This is a pre-concept. You can see that it is marked as a draft. You can see where the proposed access is coming in off of State Road 82, and you get a sense of the size of the buffer from the community that is just adjacent to it. And I did want to note that that vehicle strip lot that is already in operation, that is for rental cars, insurance, thank you, rental cars that have been damaged or totaled. They bring them to this strip lot in order to basically break them, break them down. So that, that's just an example for you to understand what type of industrial zoning or what type of industrial businesses are already located in this area. Once again, just stressing that it's, what we're looking at is a light use area. We have staff available here for, for questions. And we would, based on the directions that you gave at the last board meeting, to defer closing until this meeting, until this conversation, we're just looking for, would you like us to proceed with the closing, or do you have other direction?
Thank you.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
I do, Mr. Chairman. There were a couple of things I was hoping that would be hit on today that weren't hit on in their presentation. And so let me just kind of start with the basics here. So the land that you're showing here that we would purchase is currently already zoned industrial general, conventional zoning?
That is correct, sir.
So.
This is already zoned as industrial.
So when a, when a, this is going to be like a really simple explanation, but correct me if I'm wrong with it. So a person could purchase industrial general and begin developing the uses that are allowed on that industrial general property without coming to the board of county commissioners for a hearing?
That is correct. If they come in with an industrial purpose as it's set forth in the zoning, they do not have to go to zoning, and they do not need to seek approval for, for that business.
So that's how zoning works. It's industrial general zoning. You get a schedule of uses with that zoning. That means you're approved to buy this property and do these uses without having to come for a public hearing then?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, and the setback for industrial general, I learned this this week, I was, is 25 feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so 25 feet, not 1,025 feet, but 25 feet?
That is correct, sir.
I was hoping today that you all would provide us with that schedule of uses that's allowed for this property. Do you have that available? And could you put that up on the screen?
I don't have it with me, Commissioner, but it is in section, chapter 34 of our Land Development Code. It's section 34903. It's a table of regulations that dictate what can be done on that property. I believe Dave might have a copy of it.
Yeah, if you, if you handed that copy up, we could put it on the screen. This is what I learned this week that I was not aware of, but I'm concerned for the community here when I learned it. Because I think this is a big, this is a big eye-opener for me on behalf of the Pelican Preserve community. If we can put that document, I think they're trying to get it worked out. There's a, there's a, there you go. Yeah, we'll zoom out on that. So, okay, could, could somebody from our staff explain this to me then?
Absolutely. You'll see in column four from the left, SDIG column, the P indicates it's a permitted use. SE indicates it's a special exemption. So if you go down that table in row four for IG, you'll see all the permitted uses for IG zoning. And I know that's just the first page, several pages of these uses.
So maybe flip to the second page. That, that talks about like aircraft landing strips and helicopter landing strips, animal clinics, control center, automobile repair.
Commissioner, as you read down that list, I'll just point out that on that zoning, you could have freight and cargo handling.
You could have freight and cargo handling?
Yes, sir. Gasoline dispensing. You can have a machine shop, maintenance facilities, manufacturing. So there's a ver, you know, a variable of uses for that, various uses for that property.
So what you're saying is they could go through this list of uses. They could look at these things. They could come and do a gasoline distribution facility and be only 25-foot setback then from the community?
That is correct. That's what that zoning permits.
Okay. I was concerned about this on behalf of the, the community because I think there, we're at a point where I, I believe this property might get sold. And when it does get sold, I think you got to worry about who the neighbor's going to be. I, I know, because I worked with you all for 10 years, that you're already offering up a 1,025-foot setback, 1,000 feet more than what is required. I know that you all would do the things that you'd say you're going to do to try and make it the best neighbor to the, to the surrounding neighborhood. I don't know what the private market's going to do. Not to, not to cast dispersions on the private market. There's obviously wonderful, great people who are in business all over the county. But that was one thing that I learned this week, that I, I was hoping we could make part of our story as we talk to people today, that this is a real live consideration, wouldn't need a board hearing, and could be approved if somebody bought it for some of these uses. Mr. Chairman, thanks for letting me ask those questions.
Not a problem. Any other questions? For staff?
My question was staff. Christine, what did you, did you need any action from us today?
Commissioner, based on your action that you took last week was to defer till this meeting, so we need direction to move forward at this time or to provide us different direction.
I'm an awful lot of public cards. Go to public comment.
You know, I see that you have an awful lot of public comment cards, and I know a lot of people came a really long way to speak this morning. Happy to hear from everybody who wants to speak this morning. No problem with that. One, one thought I had is would the dialogue be better if we asked our team to go out to Pelican Preserve and hold an informational session at the clubhouse there, if they'd be so willing to have us, where they could have experts and staff on hand to answer the really good questions that, that people have? Because my experience tells me what happens is folks come up here and they only get three minutes to ask questions. During those three minutes, when they ask the questions, we don't talk back and forth with them. Conversations and things get heated. It seems like people almost walk away more angry and with less information, whereas maybe we could foster a better conversation by going out to their community, showing them what this is about, answering the really good questions about the environment, the other uses that are already approved there, and what we would do to try and be a good neighbor. So if the board wanted to give that direction to our staff to maybe sometime within the next 30 days, try and hold that informational session out at Pelican Preserve, I would support that.
Is it a motion?
I'll make it as a motion. Sure.
I will second it.
My other question, what does that do? Do we need to take action for the other things? Does it have a clock ticking on this? And we've had, we've had meetings out there in the past, so I'm not, we can, I see the heads shaking. Yes, I see a lot of heads already shaking no to this. So I want to continue the communication, but we have a clock ticking on those other items. So do we need to react to that, too, today? Or just, we're going to kick the can down the road for another meeting, then have to come back again?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, our, our deadline is May 2nd to close. So.
With May 2nd in mind, certainly have the ability. Here's, you know, obviously, since you brought this up, Commissioner Hammond, my takeaway from the last meeting was there seemed to be an awful lot of people that didn't feel to be engaged in this process. to be engaged in this process. And I've been doing this, not as a commissioner for that long, but certainly in the public sector for 17 years. And it's always best to get your engagement, it's always best to get your participation. We want to hear that. It's always challenging for three minutes for you to come up here and make a very profound case as opposed to, you know, maybe having that open forum. I commend staff. Staff's done a great job of interacting, but it's been clusters of people throughout the process and not necessarily a lot of people at one point in time. And I'm looking for the breadth of the community because I wish when we had some of the meetings, that there was the attendance that's here, okay? Because we've gone out of our way to do that. So I'm more than open-minded to have that meeting once again to do that. But, you know, I, at some point in time, if that meeting doesn't achieve what we hope it to achieve, we're going to need to move forward. We do have a deadline and Waste Management has called me this week and indicated that they're a willing seller, but if we don't want to buy it, that's okay, they're going to sell it to somebody else. And they made that abundantly clear when they called me in my conversation I had with Waste Management people. So I like your idea, Commissioner Hammond. I just wished and hoped, because I think staff's really tried to have that public engagement. It just seems like there's not been the overwhelming gathering that's here today at that type of meeting. And I'd love to see that conversation take place in a respectful way because honestly, I think we've listened loudly and clearly to you. And what has come out to me is staff's done a great job in communicating. What I've seen is there's not been the overwhelming attendance that was certainly at last meeting, but this one is certainly overwhelming where we have it standing room only. And I appreciate all you and what you have. You know, I also, you know, can recall something in your backyard. As some of you may or may not know, I was the mayor of Sanibel and I was there for, you know, about a dozen years. And they built the cell tower literally around the corner from my house. And everybody didn't understand why I didn't actually object to it or why I didn't fight it harder or why I didn't get it postponed. It was in the plan. There's nothing that I can do to prevent it and certainly understand that. So to Commissioner Hammond's point, it is industrial, Waste Management is going to sell it. I want to hear from you all and we can do this, certainly what Commissioner Hammond suggested. If that's not the will of the board, we'll listen to you all and make your comments. It's just not as productive when we have three-minute comments and I want you to have your three minutes. But sometimes I found open meetings with the proper attendance achieves the better result. So Commissioner Hammond, you have a, a motion I have seconded.
I just have comments. Sure, absolutely. I think what's top of mind for me is that this is an essential service, okay? We're not talking about something that doesn't affect all of us every day. And to go back to some of the comments we're married here, don't pick up the trash or have the ability to move it, you know, at a certain time. The mail doesn't come at a certain time. Those are all essential services that we rely on every day. This is going to have to go somewhere. And I think as was said here, we're bumping into a deadline. We lose this opportunity, okay? Through whatever process and stuff, we start falling behind. Certainly, we start falling behind in infrastructure, whether it's roads, whether it's bridges, never going to catch up. And so I would encourage you in the process of your own thoughts of thinking about this, not only for what you see as it is, but how it affects us as a county and the essential service that that is for the county.
Any other comments? I, I like, Monica, sorry about the meetings. It's going to need to be open because we have residents that live across the street from this and Stony Brook and other parts of Gateway that are concerned about, they're not here today, they're, I don't think they're here today, but they probably want to attend the meeting too because if not, you're going to be wound up doing like five different meetings. You've got Stony Brook, you have different communities in the areas surrounding other than just Pelican. So if you do it at Pelican, they need to make sure they have access for anybody else to come to the public meeting because this is a county facility, it's not just limited just to one city community. Because you have residents across the street which are actually closer than landfill on that side, they're actually affected by the traffic and other things that, so they've already contacted, asked if there's going to be a meeting after today. So we have to open it to everybody unless you do meetings throughout the community. Stony Brook, there's other community across the street from that that's concerned about it and the people south of it and Gateway too.
That's fair, yeah.
I, I mean, listen, we have a May 2nd deadline and we need to have it come back here in ample time for us to make a decision. So I am all for having, you know, a meeting or meetings, you know, but we have limited amount of capacity to do meetings. So listen, I am supportive of Commissioner Hammond's motion. I certainly want to make sure that you all have an opportunity to speak. That's the most important thing. Public engagement, I've certainly found to be the best engagement that you have and allowing public the opportunity to speak is really important. And that's why I seconded the motion and I think it's important. I think staff's done a great job, but we've been doing this for a year now and I don't know why we just haven't had the attendance of this magnitude or anywhere closely remotely to the meetings we've had. So I will certainly always err on the side of caution indicating that we can do a better job of communicating to you all and we can give it another opportunity. That's why I was in favor of Commissioner Hammond's motion and that's why I seconded it. So to try to do this with an end date in mind, because we're going to have to have public meetings if it's the will of the board. And then we're going to have to bring it back here because we have to make a decision either way. We can tell Waste Management, no, we won't go forward with the contract. That doesn't mean they can't sell the land to another person. And I think Commissioner Hammond was trying to indicate to everyone, industrial has a plethora of, of uses that may or may not be satisfactory to your liking, but it's something you can't prevent. It's an industrial property. It's been zoned that way for a long time and they can do whatever they want. The only difference is that Waste Management wants to sell now and they don't have a use for the land and that's the reason that we're here. So the will of the board, I mean, we have a motion, a second. I could take, certainly take public comment on that motion.
Yeah.
Okay? And I'm more than willing to do that. The motion clearly is to obviously allow an opportunity to have a public meeting or meetings, okay, to allow the opportunity to you all to participate, recognizing that we're going to need some time to bring it back before our May 2nd deadline and make a final decision. So that's the motion, that's a second. And I'll take any.
Just for clarification, so that motion, would that also defer the action today requested by the county manager for the agenda? That would defer that, so we're only taking a public comment on the public meeting?
Correct. So the, i- if it was the will of the board, since there's two people, we need three at least to say yes. But what is before you is to defer this action today to allow a public meeting or meetings to make sure we're engaging with you all and you have the opportunity. Because what I hope is that you show up at those meetings and 30 days or 45 days from now, if it's back on our agenda, if the meetings don't have attendance and you come into this room, my interpretation is that you didn't want the opportunity to engage in a different environment because three minutes is really hard for someone to articulate and actually make it convincing.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, okay. Do me a favor. I, I'm trying to be respectful, I'm trying to explain the process. I'm going to try one more time, okay? And if we want to talk over me, talk over me and I'll just call for an adjournment. Okay, great. Yes?
Just, just to clarify too, so if a speaker wishes to waive their time in support of the informational meeting, they could do that or they're also completely free to say their piece today as well?
So what I'm looking for is public comment and you can get up and say, I support having a public meeting, or you can come up and indicate why you don't want a public meeting and you'd rather have the action moved today. That's certainly something you can do. But that's the motion and the second on the floor, so I have to take public comment on that. Anyone that would like to speak on public comment on that item, please raise their hand. And then if you just want to line up in the center of the aisle here, that would be great. Go ahead, sir.
Very quickly, I'm Tom Shaner. I'm the Vice President of the Pelican Preserve Community Association. That is the master board for the community. I was prepared to make remarks. I will let them go. I would accept your invitation to come and in fact provide an invitation to coordinate with our board in the meeting, which by the way, the staff has never met with the HOA board. So you were invited to come to Pelican Preserve.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Patricia Zimmerman and I'm a resident of Pelican Preserve. We are here today to thank you for finally agreeing to a public hearing at public, at Pelican Preserve. We have asked many times for a public hearing. We, we are grateful that you now agree that more than just these 250 people are very, very interested in what you are planning. With, with some respect, you did have Doug Whitehead come to our community and he met with a few people, but that leaves out the 99% of Pelican Preserve residents who really need to know what your plans are and to have the opportunity to ask your staff questions. So we really, really appreciate this. I'd also like to mention that we have asked many times to get access to public records and that has not been forthcoming. And that would have helped a lot if we had had the ability to see some of the information before today's meeting. So we really are, are very respectful of what you have to do. This is an essential service, but we are looking just for some more details about this in our community.
So you're open to a public meeting? Thank you. All right, sir.
Good morning. Sarah Spector with Retsal and Andrus. It's not particularly germane to the motion, but I would ask that I just have a few moments. I'm here on behalf of the Residents Alliance for a Quality Life, many of the residents of which are here today. While the county has been looking at the Colonial and State Road 82 site as potential for a material recycling facility for approximately two years, the alliance members have not had as long to digest the county's decision and the implications it may have. Accordingly, I have been retained by the alliance to assist in reviewing the information and breaking it down so that the layperson can understand what the county is proposing. It is important that the neighbors not only understand what is being proposed, but also have a say in the outcome. While the property's industrial general zoning designation authorizes recycling centers as a permitted principal use, this is a development that will have long-lasting implications. These would be best addressed by looking at plan and development process such that there are restrictions and conditions placed on the property more so than conventional zoning currently applicable to the property. And if the county is inclined to address the alliance members' concerns in this manner, we would respectfully request that the alliance be given a seat at the table throughout the zoning process. We would ask that this be the case even if in the alternative, the county decides that it is best to proceed with the project and the location and doing so using the current zoning designation. That is, if an alternate site is not an option, we would ask that the alliance through its leadership and legal counsel have input on items such as buffers, operating hours, vehicle entry and unloading procedures, and odor containment. When adopting guidelines to regulate these items, recourse for operating outside these adopted guidelines should also be established. In short, the alliance members understand that the development of an additional recycling facility to serve the residents of Lee County is a county priority. Furthermore, it's understood that members of the public do not necessarily have input on projects of this nature. Nonetheless, given the impact the project may have on the neighboring properties, we ask that you please consider including us in discussions before decisions are made so that we can ensure that the quality life the alliance has worked so hard to achieve is maintained. Thank you.
My name is Carol Brockie. I live in Pelican Preserve. I'm here to talk about the problem of the recycle center being on the 50 acres, but I'm also here to talk about a possible solution. The problem began in 2021, 2022, when 50 acres of the Gulf Coast landfill was chosen for the new recycle center.
Ma'am, the question before you is, are you in favor of a public meeting or not?
We have requested them over and over again.
But the motion that's on the floor?
Yes, I'm in favor of it.
Yes or no?
Yes, I am.
That's all I'm looking for.
I'm in favor of it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I proceed?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
I just, if you need to go through the history, I'm just looking for a yes or a no at this point in time.
The city population in 2021 was about 800,000. It's now 900,000 in the last few years. City development at the corner of State Road 82 has grown by over 3,000 units. We have problems with your fax sheet says there's going to be 100 to 200 trucks coming in daily to the recycle center. There's 800 trucks coming into the waste to energy on a daily base on the same corner. It's a 1.6 mile differ, uh, difference. To make matters worse, there's over 75,000 cars on Colonial daily. A possible solution, which is based upon the 2020 solid waste department's recommendation for a new recycle plant in the south part of the county. Divide the county into section halves, quarters, whatever's more economical. Continue using the Buckingham recycle facility for northern sections. Build a recycle plant at the Lee Hendry landfill for the southern section. There's no residential abutting the landfill. There are many quarters there. The extension of the Lico road would help get the semis to I-75. A light at Corkscrew would be able to bring the recycle for the southern sections within minutes. A new plant at, uh, the Lee Hendry would be zoned industrial. It's owned by Waste Management. There would be no options needed for odor control, rapid closing doors, glass to be inside, need to contain noise. There's possibly less wetlands, save 200 to 3 million dollars. There is no need for an IPD. There is no need for residents' complaints. There could be more revenue from two recycle centers. Think about it, crunch the numbers, look into it. That's what we ask.
It's a simple question. Would you like a public meeting or not? If you really want to sit here and go through this process and truly, we're going to take a time in the break. I'm not doing this.
The Board of County Commissioners meeting will reconvene. I'm really looking for people to indicate whether they're in for or against a public meeting or meetings, and that's really what I'm looking to try to keep your comments limited to. Help yourself now.
Mr. Ryan, Teresa Lewis, for the record, resident of Somerset on Tree Line. I guess I would like to ask, from a procedural perspective, to amend the proposition to actually have this meeting, stop the county commissioners' meeting, adjourn it, and then immediately following that, have the public comment and discussion while we're all in the room, including city staff and people.
Unfortunately, we have a 1:30 workshop for transportation that's public for months. That's our next meeting. Sorry.
Fred Russo, I'm a Pelican Preserve resident. I am in favor of the public meeting. I have just a couple of suggestions. During the public meeting, can you guys provide some kind of engineering studies? First, the engineering study that you use to eliminate the existing site in favor of the new site. Also, I'd like to see the engineering study that was used to select or change the traffic pattern from Buckingham to 82. Frankly, that's surprising, so I'd like to see that data. And I want to reaffirm that the number that we saw up with the truck traffic said 100 trucks. I believe the study actually stated 100 to 200 trucks a day, and they would be during prime time traffic. Also specifically on the pollution, the air and dust pollution and the noise. We've all lived through this at Pelican Preserve with the landfill, and we were told that there would be mitigating circumstances. So far, we've been a bit disappointed, so I hope we can address these at the public forum. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Joe Camerata. I'm from Pelican Preserve, and I want to applaud you and thank you for your public service and your willingness to listen to us, because all along, as others have said, we have not been involved. And everything you say confirms that you do want to be a welcome and a partner in this process. That's what we're asking for, a seat at the table as you move forward, so we can voice our opinions and also our input. We usually have some valuable input. And I understand, I've been outside of the dais for over 20 years as the deputy mayor of South Brunswick, New Jersey, I still am, but what you're doing here today, I thank you and applaud you, as I said before, and acknowledge your willingness to work with us. Continue to do that and allow us to have a voice and input to how this will happen. That's all we're asking for. The public hearing at Pelican Preserve is a first step towards that? That's great, but keep us involved. It's better to involve us now, as you well know, as opposed to after the fact. That's all, and thank you for doing so.
Stephen Citron, Pelican Preserve resident.
I was a 40, first of all, I do agree with having a public forum at Pelican. I'm a 41-year veteran at the recycling industry. I did everything from running an operation to sales and marketing. I just urge the members of the commission, visit a plant that's going to be handling the volume and the material that this plant will, so you can see firsthand what is involved with noise. Doors are open for trucks, doors are open for loading and unloading finished product, receiving material. So the noise is going to be out there, and unfortunately, people don't clean recyclables the way they should, so you're going to get, especially at 95 degrees in the summer, you're going to get that odor. I'd hope you'd look into that and see that firsthand before you make your decision. I know it'll be an educated one. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I'm Frank Matt from Pelican Preserve. My address is 10312, and the plant will be right behind my door, so to speak. I am in favor of another hearing, an open hearing, but it needs to be for the whole community, and I have no idea where you're going to put 5,000 people, so keep that in mind. One thing I want to say, I was UPS for 31 years at a hub. The line of no noise is untrue. There's going to be lots of noise. These indoor facility that they're claiming that's going to, you know, bring the noise down, it will to a certain point, but only to a certain point. So that many trucks a day, it's going to be very noisy, very loud. And I have worked for 31 years. I've worked three different shifts, samis, hubs, I know what noise is. I just think that you guys can find a different location for this property. I was lied to in 2019. I bought a brand-new house on Prado. I was told by the salesperson from Lennar, what is that hill back there? It's a landfill. It'll never be opened again. Lie number one. Lie number two, nothing will ever happen to that property back there. You're good. So I'm not sure who's liable. Is Lennar or is Waste Management? That's all I have. Thank you.
I just have, on the procedure of the meeting, just a couple of asks. First of all, for there to be full-written transcription services for the staff presentation and all public comment, for the meeting to include the opportunity for public comments for three minutes with an option for a second follow-up, for those concerns to get addressed in the first round, staff to come in, and then a person to follow up. And so, thank you. And also, alternative sites with analysis.
Are you in favor of a public meeting?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
That was the question. Okay, great.
Good morning. Mary Birrelli. I am a resident of Pelican Preserve, and I am in favor of people speaking today. There are many of us here. If there are engineering studies and environmental impact studies available and information along that line that can be presented today to us, that is what I am concerned about, because I am as concerned as everybody else about those facts. And so I would appreciate getting those facts today and hearing from other people here that are here to express their concerns. Thank you.
Can Assistant County Manager Chris Brady address some environmental issues?
Commissioner, can you repeat the question?
Would you be able to talk about the environment or environmental issues?
Yes, sir. I would actually ask our director, Doug Whitehead, to address those concerns.
Good morning, commissioners. Doug Whitehead, Lee County Solid Waste. The environmental issues have been paramount in our discussions within the department, with the staff, and also, of course, in the community, is that the biggest thing we have is that this facility is enclosed. I've been involved, like other gentlemen, 25 years. The facilities that are being built today are fully enclosed. They include such things as high-speed doors after entry, low-frequency alarms for the noise. The dust is controlled inside. I heard a lot about sound, I think we should address that, is that we have done a noise study at our present facility, and what we found is that the noise of trucks at the scale and also traffic on Buckingham is what's noticed second to the backup alarms, their own equipment. Our own rolling stock, you know, heavy loader stuff, will be located, again, inside the building as part of this operation. Dust will be managed inside the building. Odor will be managed, you know, inside the building. Again, and there's a 1,000-foot setback, and as stated, we expect to have at least two view blocks, which will also deflect sound and, by design, you know, speaking to our consultant, and also deflect the wind and things like that. So this facility is very good. Our staff recently, not myself, but our staff recently visited sites in Arizona and Plano, Texas, which are large, about 600 to 700 tons per day, and are fully enclosed, and they said the operations are butt up against other residences and also other buildings. And it was, the tools they used to reduce nuisances, which we've discussed, were very, very effective there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I have a motion, a second on the floor. Some penta graphs in here.
Mr. Chair, before you call for the vote, just wanted to recap some of the things that I heard, because I think it'll be helpful for our staff as they prepare, and I know they're going to prepare a much more thorough presentation even than what this talks about, but just, I want people to know we heard them today, because this is really important. We heard some concerns about input on, they want to have input on the buffers, the hours, the loading and unloading. They, you know, they talked about there's already 75,000 cars on Colonial. What would another 200 trucks do to that? They wanted to see some studies, if we have them, that might be related to traffic or site selection or even pollution and things like that, so anything that you can do to help with those. The concerns were about noise and odor and being involved along the way as this gets planned and designed. And so I think that's, those are some of the concerns that I heard. Also backing up alarms, I wrote that down too, so, you know, that beep, beep, beep that you hear, is there any way to minimize that as you look at a facility like this? So I think that, plus, again, just helping people understand, you know, the concern that I became aware of this week, that if the government owns it and it's our facility, we certainly could control all of the mitigation efforts. If a private person owns it, private development owns it, we have much less control. If we were to deny a private owner's use of his property or her property, they're going to go to the courts, they're going to sue us. Most likely, they're going to win if it's a use that's already approved when they bought the property. And in that case, the judge is going to force us to allow them to do it and probably force us to pay that person some money, which is not a good scenario. So I just want to, you know, make sure that we hear the concerns and we help people understand the whole process and what we would do to try to be good neighbors should we move forward. So, thank you. That's Mr. Chairman. Those are my thoughts.
I think you are spot on, and I think I've listened and heard from many people on those of the concerns. What I like about open public forums is an opportunity to hear multiple solutions, multiple ideas, incorporate those, try to put them all together, so we come up with enough information to really be very transparent, but more importantly, also make sure you're aware, I think it's really important, a couple of people came up to me at the break, and we're not aware, and we're told that, you know, there's nothing going to be built there. Again, that's on whoever told you that, because obviously, when you live near an industrial site, industrial sites have unlimited things that you can do. I mean, the number of things that you can do on an industrial site are endless, and I think Commissioner Hammond was trying to indicate. So us controlling it, we're trying to control it in a best environment possible, understanding it's industrial. But with that in mind, I'm certainly, you know, inclined to call a question. I have a motion by Commissioner Hammond. I have a second.
One in favor of the motion. One thing I'd like to say before we close this is that I think the staff, everybody here, what you propose, I think, is the right direction, and is going to listen. But I also think that the realities of what could happen if we don't go forward and what that potentially could be to the community has got to be considered. I hope that clarity is above the table, too.
I have a motion, a second. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. So what we're going to do is arrange for a couple of meetings to come on out to your neighborhood. We will be fully transparent in them. We will have them as open as possible. The challenge you have with commissioners, as everyone's aware of the rules, is we have sunshine, so you can't ask each one of us to be there, listen to the conversations, talk about, you know, Commissioner Hammond said this, Commissioner Reince said that. That is how we obviously violate sunshine. We're not allowed to do that. We really have a lot of limitations that most people don't realize. I think it's really important to hear what you have to say, and that's what I was hoping to achieve today, because having sat up here for 17 years, three minutes is not a most effective way of trying to convince a commissioner on what you think is germane. We want to hear your issues. We want to make sure we address the issues. We also want you to understand what limitations we do and don't have. Whether we build here or not, that's a second question, but we want to lay out the scope. We want you to understand exactly what's here and the opportunity. I appreciate everyone coming out, but we have tried this for a year now, and I applaud you all for coming. I would just encourage you, when we announce the meetings, that you do the same type of effort to come and participate and give us your thoughts, because I want this to be transparent. Whether we vote yes or no, I want you to listen, I want you to understand the ramifications, and I want to hear what you have to say. That's truly what I was trying to do today, nothing more, and I think this outcome is better than trying to actually listen for the next hour, because obviously, that may not necessarily come out. You may make some convincing arguments, you may make some convincing thoughts and suggestions that we may incorporate, we may not. But I think that's where you want the public, and that's where I come from, from a public engagement point of view. So we do have a motion, we have a second, it carried unanimously, so we're going to obviously defer this item. We will certainly reach out and make sure that we have multiple meetings and address the issues that you're referring to. I recognize that there's 5,000 people in the community. We'll do the best we can to come to your neighborhood, to have the meetings, to have as many people participate, but in every major controversy that I've witnessed in office for 17 years, generally, 10% of the people show up. Unfortunately, 100% of the people never show up. But with that in mind, that is the county item, county manager's item. Any other items, sir?
No, that is all for today.
We have a workshop at 1:30?
Correct.
Okay.
On transportation priorities.
Thank you. County manager, county attorney, sorry.
Nothing for the board's consideration today, sir. Thank you.
Any other public comments? I'm open to public comments that are not on the agenda that we haven't discussed.
If I could pull my time start, I want to give a copy of this over to whoever. Now, I'd like to ask to be able to use the overheads before I start here. I got a few pictures I'd like to hear that he showed. I'm ready to, my name's Smokin' Joe. I come here today with the hopes that there's something that can be done to warn the citizens of the serious and unauthorized disposal of waste, including construction debris, hazardous waste, lead acid batteries, vehicle fluids, paints, solvents, air conditioners, refrigerators, propane tanks, containers, tires, et cetera, as far back as 2019, which have resulted in the poisoning of and creation of a contamination field. The continuous actions of David Mulca has resulted in numerous violations and hazardous conditions endangering the environment for years to come. David Mulca has continued use of backfill of environmentally dangerous material. He has ignored multiple warnings, including but not limited to the dates of September 4th, 2020, August 16th of 2023, and continued to dump and store environmentally hazardous waste materials to create a hazardous site. The Florida Department of Environmental Protection discovered as recently as 2020, found at least three cancer-causing chemicals released and discharged into the environment. In 2022, several times, in 2023, David Mulca ignored the warnings, and in addition, after the county issued a stop work order, he continued dumping without regard until an explosion from a freon refrigerator when his honk crew was unloading. The callous actions and disregard to the environment by David Mulca, willfully engaging in the illegal dumping of hazardous materials, have an effect for years to come. This runoff will affect the 10-mile canal, the Estero Bay, and eventually go into our Gulf. Shouldn't we do more to protect and inform the citizens? I can only imagine people fishing and eating potentially cancer-causing sea life, the damage to the ecosystem, manatees, the bull sharks, and many other aquatic life. Many of you have publicly endorsed David Mulca from the very seat in District 3 where this has occurred. Commissioner Ruane, for 20 years, I was under the impression that you fought for the safety of our groundwater. I asked each of you seated on this board and all the others who have endorsed David Mulca to look at the community in the eyes and tell us, how could you endorse someone who has imposed such damage to our Florida and why you believe he is suitable for your support? I encourage every one of you to do what's right for our community and to help us eradicate him from doing any more damage to our paradise. I have provided you with the proof. Now, we have to hope that you will work with us to protect our homeland. I do want to thank you for your time. I'm Smokin' Joe. I do appreciate any effort y'all can do. Mr. Sandelli, you need to think about that before you step down from that seat. Thank you. I'm Smokin' Joe. I love you, Florida.
Any other public speakers, sir?
My name is Troy Davison. I live at 6200 Greenbrier Farms Road in Buckingham here. I don't know if you guys can help us or not. We live in a neighborhood, in a rural neighborhood, that is ag to, it's within the Buckingham Preserve. We have a commercial business that started operating down our street. We have a neighborhood of 18 homes. It's strictly homes. We moved into that neighborhood to get away from the fast-paced city life. People got horses, people got cows. I mean, I just dropped a pig off this morning for the 4H program at the fair. We like it out there because it's quiet. And then about December, all of a sudden, we started noticing all these glass trucks coming down the road. There was a property that was for sale down there. It was 10 acres, had a couple barns on it, and apparently, this business bought this place. And I went down there and I asked the guy, what are you guys doing here? And they said, well, we're manufacturing our glass doors here. And I said, you can't do that. And, you know, the guy basically said, well, you know, we have no place to go, come up with every excuse in the book of why he can't go to the commercial area where they belong. And so, of course, with that, we called the county code enforcement. Code enforcement came out, code enforcement violated them. Obviously, with the procedures, they get 30 days, they go out and they check this, that, and the other. Well, after they got violated, they obviously have no intentions of going anywhere. They brought in a shed 20 foot by 10 foot, put it on their property. They came back out to recheck the place, and when they rechecked the place, there's plenty of photos from the code enforcement officer in that area of them still conducting business. Now, mind you, this starts at 6:00 a.m. This morning, when I was loading my pig up to go to the fair, it was 5:55. I was going to get my trailer, and there was already a car at the gate. There's a house to the south, there's a house to the north, there's a house to the east of them, and of course, we got County Preserve to the west of them. They start making noise at 6:30 in the morning. Now, fortunately for me, I live far enough down the road to where the noise doesn't affect me. The traffic affects me. It's a private road, privately maintained, it is poorly paved, so we get a lot of potholes and stuff that are on that street that are maintained by us. Everybody chips in money, me and another neighbor, we go out and we do the legwork. Now, we got these guys that are coming in with their employees in the morning, and I'm not talking four or five, I'm talking 15 or 20. They get in their trucks, they leave, they go do a job, they come back, they load up some more glass, they go do another job if they got plenty of time. We have major, like 10-wheel delivery trucks that are coming down delivering to these people. We got semi trucks that are coming down the road. The road's barely big enough for two cars to pass by staying on the pavement.
Thank you for your comment.
Okay, time's over. If you guys can do something, thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Tom Dennis, and I'm also a resident of Greenbrier Farms Road. I live next door to this glass company. We are inside the rural Buckingham Preserve area. This individual, rather than comply with code enforcement, sold his business to a relative for $10 to continue on, which is a farce, we all know that. I called code enforcement, code enforcement's come out and done all they can do. All they can do is cite them. They say they can't shut a business down. The typical fine, I'm told, is $50 a day. He bought 430,000 square feet of property. $50 a day is $1,500 a month. What do you think he's going to pay for an industrial manufacturing zone piece of property? The average in Lee County is $16.42 a square foot. Code enforcement has no teeth. They can go to a maximum of $250 a day, which is still less than he's going to pay to be legal and rent in an industrial manufacturing zone. You've got to do something to give code enforcement the teeth to shut them down or increase the fines enough that it becomes unattractive to continue business. It's up to you guys. You set the policies. So I'm asking you, $250 probably goes back 30 years ago. I think it needs to be addressed. It's the only way you're going to stop this. And through my research, I've learned, we're not the only people in this boat. The county has a boatload of residences that people are putting businesses next to that violate the zoning, and it's lucrative. I mean, if this guy decides in 10 years to pay the fine, he's put 10 times, 15 times more money in his pocket by doing this than paying the fine. So please, let's do something to get the county in line so that we can have health, we can have safety, and we can have quality of life. Thank you.
Any other public comment? See none, I'll close the public comment, and I'll call for a German. Thank you all.